Thirty-five seconds early on this one. Baltimore City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee, we're here for the fiscal year 2020 budget for Department of Planning, All Services, and the Capitol Budget. I'm Eric Costello, councilman from the 11th District, Chairman of the Committee, joined by Vice President Sharon Green Middleton from the 6th District, member of the Committee, Councilwoman Shannon Snead, 13th District, member of the Committee, Councilman Yitzhak Shlifer, 5th District, member of the Committee, Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District, member of the Committee. To my immediate right is Marguerite Curran. Staff to the Committee, we have Kimberly Rubens and Rebecca Tab from the Office of Council President Brandon Scott, and Jeff Amoros representing Mayor Jack Young will be back in a minute. Chris, if you could very briefly introduce your staff and then run through your presentation, please keep that in the neighborhood of -- actually, we're going to call an audible here because I'm going to step out for a second, so I'm going to ask my question and get that out of the way. The first question is, who's the person at Department of Planning who makes the maps now?
Jamie Williams.
Jamie Williams, okay. Chris or Lori, can you have, as a request, can you have him send over, I call it a data dictionary, but basically all the categories of stuff that he can put on a map for us? Because I want to get some new maps.
The layers?
Yeah, the layers, yep, the GIS layers. You know, parks, schools, you know, you guys got all kinds of stuff. I need to get a couple maps made for a project on MLK. Yeah, email's perfect, but it'll go to Jeff Amoros. Yep, everything goes to Jeff. You got that one? All right, thanks, Daniel. And then the second question is, the cybersecurity incident?
Yeah.
I already asked you about this yesterday.
You did, but I want to add something to that.
Oh, okay, go right ahead.
So I blamed it all on our youngest--
Pull that mic up, Chris, please.
I blamed it all on our youngest staff member, but actually Stephanie Smith had a lot to do with that workout, and I think we should acknowledge that.
Well, Department--
She was that person's supervisor.
Department of Planning by day, delegate by night, and IT superstar--
All-around superwoman.
All right.
Great.
Okay, so, back to you, if you could run through your presentation.
Yeah. So let me just do a brief introduction, because this is the first one I've done, and I thought I could summarize a couple things, sort of why I applied for this job, and more specifically, there were a number of questions yesterday around our equity work, or equity work in general, so I thought I would lead with that, and then talk a little bit about some of the changes happening in the Planning Department before we go through the slides, if that's okay. So first, back to the equity issue, just to summarize the history here, the very bottoms-up, staff-driven process started in the Planning Department long before I got here, and specifically four years ago, and that led to the creation of an Assistant Director position, which is Stephanie Smith, and hopefully was also an impetus to the bill that you all passed several years ago. Since then, we've had a number of ongoing trainings. This is critical. I've participated in some of these in the CDC world, specifically the People's Institute Undoing Racism, which I recommend very highly. I think our staff has gone through some with Associated Black Charities and SKEO Consultings. We also created a Comprehensive Racism in the Structure presentation about our government's history of inequity in policy and planning for our staff. Other agencies have seen it, maybe some of you have seen it, and the trainings will be ongoing, so we're surveying our staff. I think we have a staff retreat around equity coming up in two weeks, I believe. I think the President asked for some definitions. I think the definition in your bill is equity means closing the gaps in policy practice and allocation of city resources so that race, gender, religion, sexual orientation, and income do not predict one's success while also improving outcomes for all. Our working definition has been an equitable Baltimore, addresses the needs and aspirations of its diverse population, and meaningfully engages residents through inclusive and collaborative processes to expand access to power and resources, and I think we feel very good about that statement. So what are we doing? The work we've done is, we've been working with the Urban Sustainability Directors Network, and it considers four sort of overall areas of equity, which I can run through, I can define each one, or I could just run through them. Structural equity talks about what historic advantages or disadvantages have affected residents in the given community. Procedural equity is how residents who have been historically excluded from planning processes, being authentically included in the planning, implementation, and evaluation of the policy or project. Distributional equity speaks to, does the distribution of civic resources and investment explicitly account for potentially racially disparate outcomes? And transgenerational equity is the fourth one, does the policy or project result in unfair burdens on future generations? So our goals in June of 2019 are to improve and access and increase the dialogue and connections between the Department of Planning and underserved communities in Baltimore, ensure that the Planning Department's staff reflect the demographics of Baltimore City, use an equity lens to develop, revise, and evaluate city policies, use an equity lens to prioritize capital investments, and to use an equity lens to evaluate the Planning Department's internal practices and policies. So, I, as many of you know already, I have a background in community development. I applied for this job because of that background, and because I thought we could do more as a city in community development. As you know, we support three public commissions, the Planning Commission, the SAR Commission, and the Sustainability Commission, and as far as I can tell, they are all occupied and staffed by very high-quality volunteers and staff. We felt we could do more in the community development world, and I think that work will dovetail very closely with this equity issue. So an example, I'll give you several examples of that. We're trying to strengthen our community planning section, it's called Comprehensive Planning, and I think that's a good term to retain. We want to be as comprehensive about neighborhoods as we possibly can. It's not just about planning, it's about quality of life in our neighborhoods, and to go back to our equity goals, that includes community organizing support, implementing the framework for community development that you saw yesterday at the DHCD presentation, and providing even more support, I hope, to our neighborhood leaders and our community partners in the future. We have, this year, done several things with the Equity Analysis and the CIP. So, we've already started on implementation, and the place we chose to start was with the CIP. So as part of those CIP already, for the last two years, actually, we've set an expectation with the agencies to incorporate equity into their capital budgeting requests, and we're bringing the CIP planners into the community to create more on-ramps for public input into the CIP process. So we're trying to be a little more transparent with the CIP process. We've also hired a consultant that began in January with a six-month contract to analyze the CIP through an equity lens. That should be completed by the end of the month, and we'll be able to report out on that. And then we will be with the other agencies in the city, developing or hopefully fleshing out our equity plan in time for the June 2020 deadline. We've also completed the second, and are now enrolling for the third Resident Planning Academy. This is designed to bring new residents, new community leaders, into the planning process to teach them about things that the Planning Department does, whether it be the CIP, or the Planning Commission, or the Sustainability Commission. So we've just finished our second cohort, and are now accepting enrollments for the third. I think 60 residents have been through it to date, and we'll start another, 30 or 60? As I mentioned earlier, we're having a retreat in two more weeks. So, just to sort of finish up the summary before we go on the slides, the slides are by service number. We hope, in the next year, specifically, I hope July 1st, we will begin implementing a slight reorganization to strengthen our Comprehensive Planning Section, bring a few more people into it. There will be a planner assigned to each impact area that the HCD has designated, and we will also be participating vigorously in what we call the Middle Neighborhood Strategy. So I want to introduce that to you if you haven't heard of it already. The Middle Neighborhood Strategy is the middle of the housing typology, so it's not the successful residential real estate markets, it's not the highly distressed ones, it's the middle. Fifty percent of Baltimore citizens live in middle neighborhoods. They tend to be the arc around the north and east side of the city, and the south and west side of the city. Seventy-seven percent of those residents are African-American, and there's a lot of talk, in fact, it's on national public radio tonight, the racialization of real estate in Baltimore has created a vast disparity between household wealth, particularly between black and white residents in general nationally, and in Baltimore City, one of the tools for addressing that disparity is the Middle Neighborhood Strategy. So, home values are the most basic way to start the creation of household wealth, and the Middle Neighborhood Strategy, in which 50% of our residents live, can be a powerful tool for building household wealth in those neighborhoods. As my background in the CDC, the community development field for years has been focused on the middle neighborhoods that could either increase in attractiveness and value, or decrease in attractiveness and value. And our job is to make sure that they increase in attractiveness and value, and consequently build household wealth.
So, Chris, if I might interject, I know there's going to be quite a few questions from--
Okay.
--council persons. If you can go through your slides in less than 10 minutes so that we can get to any of the questions. And I don't think they've been introduced, but we've been joined by Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark and Councilman Ryan Dorsey.
And I'm afraid I haven't introduced our staff.
Okay, really briefly.
So we have two Assistant Directors, Lori Feinberg and Stephanie Smith behind me. Director of CHAP is Eric Holcomb. Director of Food Policy is Holly Frechback. Our Chief Financial Officer, Jamie Kramer. Sarah and Kristen are from the CIP section. Eric Tiso heads up the Land Use and Urban Design Section, and Andrade is with the Office of Sustainability. So that's our team here. Cohen's from the Mayor's Office, also, if issues come up with casino revenue.
Got you, okay.
There is, maybe I could cut to the, service number 761 is basically our development review, and there's not, there are no major changes in general in our budget, in the scope of our work, but I do want to highlight two additional items, two enhancements that we have applied for this year. One is with the Department of Finance to put together an asset management strategy. Asset management sort of looks at the gap between the operating budget and the capital budget. We can call it buildings, we can call it, it can include any type of asset the city has. We do know that certain types of assets, like our city building stock, are deteriorating faster than we are addressing those issues. So this position, which will sort of jointly be shared between the Planning Department and the Finance Department, will start to put together that strategy. The second enhancement grant is with the Food Policy Network, and it would be a shared enhancement with the Health Department. So it does two things. It provides a position in the Health Department to focus on food security, and it provides a pot of money in the Planning Department to address some issues around food security that have been specifically identified by a group of advisors, one in each councilmatic district, and in this case, it has been around providing healthy food options in corner stores. So, I don't know if you want me to still go through these slides, I can't read them, maybe you can. CHAP is the second service area. Our staffing levels are not changing. I will note, we will have a number of folks out on maternity leave for the next three or four, five months. Yeah, I got one. Our performance reviews, we're very conscious, we're, A, we're very conscious of the value of these credits, but we're also very conscious of the time it takes to process them, and I think we've been very good about doing our reviews in a timely way. The third one, Comprehensive Planning and Resource Management are really two divisions in the Planning Department. The Comp Planning Division, I referenced earlier, the Resource Management is our CIP unit, and hopefully we'll also include an asset management piece in the future. And then finally, the Office of Sustainability is in 765. We have a new sustainability plan adopted at the end of, just, it was actually the beginning of 2019. We have a fair amount of new staff in that division. We will hopefully be working with the President's Office on our cybersecurity issues through the DP3 process. We will be working closely with DHCD and the Green Network Planning to address the vacant lands that our DHCD and core program will be creating in the next four years. So I think I'll leave it at that, open for questions.
Okay, thank you. And we've been joined by Council President Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Director. How are you this morning? I just want to start off by saying that I don't have to ask the Planning Department, the first question I ask every other agency, because you guys are light-years ahead of every single other agency as far as equity. I wanted to thank you, thank the Deputy Directors, Deputy Delegate Director, as I like to call her, my delegate as well--
Director.
--for your commitment to equity and furthering the cause in Baltimore, and also for your work with the other agency. So just wanted to publicly acknowledge that and give you guys credit where credit is due to show, that you guys understand and know how important it is to make Baltimore a better city. My question, first question for you, at last year's Neighborhood Impact Planning Hearing, the former director stated that the Planning Department was undertaking efforts to support community-driven master plan efforts. What are the, what's the status of this work?
So we have created, before I came here, we created a new process for a community-driven master plan to be taken to the Planning Commission. So that was done, and I'm not sure the exact, but two or three have successfully gone through that process now. So we're up and running on that, I think.
Good, and thank you. And how many positions, and how much is budgeted for specifically that work, if you know?
For that type of work?
Yeah, that type of work.
I think I would refer to 763, which is the, which is the Comp Planning Division, which, and the mapping and the CIP that support it. That service level is roughly 3.7 million. Roughly, I'm going to say 15 positions.
Okay, thank you. You guys had the Exelon Grant that provided 2.6 million, and it expires, expires in the fiscal year 19. Can you talk about how that grant was spent? Can you also provide the Council with any and all reports that were completed from work with the funds from that grant?
So I'm going to assume this is Alice Kennedy's work?
Yeah.
Yeah, Andrade can speak to that.
Thank you. And after that, I'm done, Mr. Chair.
Council President Scott, I'm Andrade. That was during, the money, $52 million was applied for, right at the Exelon Constellation merger with four city agencies. So that money was spent between four agencies, one of them being the Office of Sustainability Planning, and it was a certain pot of money that's gone. It's all been spent.
Yep. Can you talk about some of the work that you guys did with that?
There was about $12 million went to the Baltimore Energy Challenge, the peer-to-peer network for reducing energy in residence homes. About $12 million went to create a loan program for that Healthy Neighborhoods and TRF instituted with nonprofits and small businesses to increase their energy efficiency. Housing got, Ken Strong, when he was, his shop got a bunch of it for doing energy efficiency in residence homes, directly in low-income homes. And then the fourth pot went to Human Services, and helped, I haven't thought about this in a long time, but helped residents with energy bills, I believe.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
My first question is related to the CIP, and as Council President Scott said, Planning has been the leader as it relates to equity, and I believe I heard you said that the, I guess, the process related to how the CIP is viewed through an equity lens is yet to be developed or will be completed in the--
Well, it's a work in process, so we have been asking agencies to use that lens when they submit their request, so that's--
You used a lens for this past CIP?
Past two years, actually, we started--
So let me, so if I might interject, and I'm not saying that I'm versed in the lens, but I think I do know when there's not equity when I see it. And when I looked at this past CIP, and I'm just, I'm not looking for district, I'm just talking about West Baltimore in general, if you, if you were to overlay investment maps from Department of Transportation, to Public Works, to Wreck and Parks, you name it, there would be a big void in West Baltimore as it relates to investment from agency to agency. And I, as I watched it, coming to the Planning Commission hearings, I just couldn't believe that agency after agency presented plans that were so inequitable. It was, it was so insensitive to this, to the move that the entire city is making as it relates to equity, that each agency after agency would present plans to the Planning Commission that reflected a total ignoring of the needs of West Baltimore.
Okay.
And if I'm wrong, please tell me, but that's what my eyes saw.
So, we can have the CIP staff talk about specifics. We commissioned a outside review of the CIP this year to look at that issue. The University of Baltimore is doing this work. It's not complete yet. The preliminary work that I saw, and by the way, the Planning Commission, it was not ready for the Planning Commission to use this year for the CIP review. The preliminary, if I could summarize it, essentially, 50% of the city, we could, we could look at the equity issue through the CIP because the projects were geocoded to some extent, but 50% of the CIP were in bulk accounts, that you can't transfer to a specific geographic location. So that's the challenge, and that overwhelmingly is in the large agencies. The smaller agencies have been much more nimble about that. So, we'll have--
So you're saying that 50%, of the CIP budget will never be able to be allocated--
No, we're trying to figure out how to allocate that.
But presently--
I think we can speak to that--
The current model doesn't allow for it to be allocated through an equity lens.
Well, through the sort of first cut, this first sort of superficial lens, we only found 50% of the capital budget that could be geocoded through an equity lens. So now we're working on the hard parts, the other 50%, and I could have Sarah--
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen. So I wanted to lift up that we are only able to map out about 50% of where the projects are based on what the requests are coming in from the different agencies. So we've been working with them to try to get them to give us kind of the locations at the requesting point, instead of at the end. You know what I mean? Because sometimes they would give bulk, saying, let's say, we're going to do a set of projects in a quadrant of the city, but that's not specific enough for us to map for the purposes of the type of inquiry that you're making, but also for ourselves to assess, you see what I'm saying, how equitable it is? So we've seen some progress and some more detailed data being given at the requests, but it's incrementally improving. You see what I'm saying? It's not on a scale that I think is where we think it needs to be, and we're continuing to work with our CIP partners and the agencies to do that. And as you said, some of our agencies where I think it's a little bit more obvious, if you're making an improvement in a park or like a rec center, that's so, you know, easy to map and obvious, but sometimes there's some of the other work that maybe is more long-range, and they don't know exactly where they're going to do it at the requesting point. Even that being said, we're hoping that we can get more quick mapping sooner, not like years later. You know what I'm saying?
I got you.
So that we really can gauge where things were, so I hope that was helpful.
No, it was, and so, while you're there, and I know we're waiting for the analysis from University of Baltimore, but this was for Delegate Smith, that, I mean, you know, from your perspective, did my eyes deceive me as it relates to the, you know, investments in West Baltimore and what I would call a lack of equity in those investments?
Well, I'll say that there's, Councilman, a lot of truth to the fact that we did a preliminary analysis, I guess almost 18 months to two years ago, that did indicate a lot of what we sense the final product will, you know, suggest. There's still some scrubbing, refining before it's ready for, you know, for prime time, but I think some of the inflexibility with some of the dollars that have to be spent for, for example, public works improvements, they have to be spent generally based on the fact that we are complying with consent decrees and other things that we have to improve our infrastructure, right? And so in that situation, it could on paper look like an area is getting more capital investment, but not in a way that I think the everyday resident can always appreciate. Another thing that we're also doing that wouldn't be maybe evident in this presentation from a budget perspective, is that it's not enough for us just to do trainings with the CIP staff. We're trying to make sure that we're working with our budget team that they're in control of the operating budget, because we all know the operating budget dwarfs the capital budget, but there's still a relationship.
Right.
Because sometimes people are not going to be utilizing a program if it's in a facility that's uncomfortable or not pleasant, right? So sometimes we're looking at these things in isolation and on parallel tracks, and that in some ways we're missing. If something, maybe that is a good program, but it's not happening in a place suited for it. You know, it's things like that, that we're trying to build those relationships. I wouldn't pretend that we're going to overnight kind of gel the way we would want to make sure everything is more equitable from both the capital and operating side, but we're starting those conversations-- starting those conversations, and I feel that people are really invested in those conversations being fruitful. I also wanted to lift up that we did do a public deliberation with the New York Academy of Medicine, trying to look at our capital investments through the lens of health equity, because when you're making investments in the built environment, it will have an impact on someone's health, whether it's, you know, you know, the facility having proper circulation of air, whether it's, you know, you having adequate access to green space in your community. So, that was actually a really exciting conversation, because I think one of the things that we got out of that deliberation was that most agencies are making requests based on their own personal planning, which is understandable. They have master plans, they have other guidance from maybe council, the mayor, what have you, but it's usually not targeted in a geographic way. So, at the end of our deliberation, there was someone that said, we keep making our investments agency by agency, maybe we should be making our target, our investments in a targeted geographic way, which to me, I had wanted someone to arrive at that, but they arrived at that organically through the way the deliberation was being conducted by the New York Academy of Medicine. So, I just wanted to put that out there, that there are people that I think are open to it, but that would be a paradigm shift. That's not how business has usually been done. So, that's just something that will be probably part of the recommendations you would hear and the related research that will come out the end of this month.
No, thank you. My second question is related to the food policy. The, when I look at the overview, I said, I guess from 2015, 25% of the city was in, I guess...
Healthy food priority area.
Healthy food priority areas.
Former food desert.
Right. And then with the most recent reporting in 2018, it's down to 23.5. But the report attributed most of that to opening of a supermarket in East Baltimore. So, am I to assume that there's been no change in communities in West Baltimore?
I'll have Holly, just because she's our food, you know, policy person, but just before she speaks, I wanted to lift up that in addition to the report around the capital investments that comes out at the end of the month, it's going to also include an interactive map, which also could help you all, you know, in real-time kind of see where the investments are. So, I just wanted to lift up.
Thank you, Councilman, for your question. So, Holly Freystaff, Food Policy Director. So, as it concerns, 23% of Baltimore city residents are in healthy food priority areas, 146,000 people. What we did see and change between 2015 and 2018 map was 5,000 people were directly impacted by the opening of the grocery store. But I want to bring your attention to healthy food priority areas are not only determined by whether a grocery store is there or not, it depends on income. All right? So, as our income continues to drop down, or we've had a lot of issues this year with SNAP benefits and with the federal shutdown, so whenever we see any economic changes, we're going to see changes in our healthy food priority areas. So, I would say that we're continuing to work on the brick and mortar approach, but where we're evolving is that we know online SNAP benefits is going to be part of our solution to be able to reduce healthy food priority areas in our city, and Baltimore is one of the 10 pilot cities across the nation, and we should be rolling out next year. So, we know that brick and mortar and online SNAP is a part of it, but we also know that supermarkets alone won't solve the issue, and that's why we have an eight-point plan.
Okay. And my last statement, and then I'm going to call on Councilman Slifer, and I know you and I have discussed this before, and maybe you even directed me to a model in Chicago where the public housing is, is potentially used as a location for a brick and mortar grocer. Can you speak to those efforts in the city? And because, especially with the recent demolition that will occur at Gilmore Homes, it seems like that would be a perfect opportunity to integrate some food access.
So, thank you for that question. So, our goal is to really look at how do we embed a food plan in public housing. So, we did have a meeting last week with HAPC and with Janet and her team, and one of the conversations we're starting to have is how could the resident food equity advisors help provide a strategy and plan of embedding a multi-pronged strategy in food in the public housing? So, it would include retail, and it would also include urban agriculture, but also online SNAP. How are our developments being created so that online SNAP would be able to work and function and have a strategic plan of how do we embed food into all 14 public housing redevelopments in the upcoming years? So, that is a piece of work that we're really excited to continue working on.
No, I think that those conversations are critical, they should be accelerated. We live in an environment where if you demolish any portion of public housing, people immediately cry gentrification, and so I think that if you and Janet Abrams were able to partner on how we could bring food access into this area, it would be a clear statement from the city that, that demolition was not to, for somebody else's benefit, but was to improve the life of the residents at Gilmore Homes. Councilman Slifer?
Yes. I don't have any questions for you, but I do have a statement for you. I want to thank you for the work that you're doing, and also for always communicating the work that you're doing with the council and partnering with us and considering us a partner, so thank you for that. The rest of my questions are for the director. On this budget, this 2020 budget, was this, I know you just started a few months ago, was this, is this your budget or was this already set up before you came here?
It is not substantially different from last year's.
Oh, it was set before? I got you, okay. Is there any, is there any changes that you were interested in making to the budget before it passes? With it, like whatever changes or different vision that you have, please?
Well, yes, there are two enhancement applications that I talked about, the food policy and the asset management one, so the short answer is yes, and those are them.
Okay. I actually have a question on the asset management piece. So, on it, it says a $650,000 for a person also to develop a system, a citywide inventory and assets. So, I like you mentioned, I think that's covering all the assets, like bridges and buildings and everything, right? So, is that for, like at the end of the year, are we going to be getting like a plan, or are we going to get like an inventory of all those items to see exactly item by item what the city has? Because I've read different articles over the years where there's all different figures, generally in the neighborhood of $4 billion worth of city at real assets, and so is that what we're going to get at the end of the day?
Yes, but it'll take longer than a year. I think the work program is that it's a four-year work program, where we try to do 25% a year. It is comprehensive. You mentioned transportation, for example, they really only understand the, the condition of their bridges. They don't have data on the rest of their structure, so it will take at least four years, I believe.
Got you. And so, are you guys able to just keep us posted on, you know, just giving us like updates, I guess, every six months or a year, just on what's been inventoried and how much you guys are valuing those, those assets at, or the general scope?
Sure.
Yeah, because what I found is there's, there's a lot of untapped assets out there in the city, and every day we hear or see a different asset that we, you know, we might not have known existed before, so. What, what's the primary outcome that you got, that you're looking to see in, you know, in 2020? Like what's one, you know, what's the main outcome difference that you're looking to see versus, you know, previous years?
Oh, well, I'm trying to address that with the introduction, but so, as you heard yesterday, we, we have a new community development strategy for the neighborhoods of Baltimore, and so, going forward a year, I would hope that we can be much more involved in that, and specifically, the first two pieces of that that are emerging are the four impact investment areas and the middle neighborhood strategy. So, the impact investment area is essentially set up. It has been for a couple of months now. The middle neighborhood strategy will evolve over the course of this calendar year and should emerge around the holidays.
And so, this might be a question for Jeff, for the administration, if you don't have the answer, and that's, that plan was developed by the previous mayoral administration. Is the current mayoral administration on board 100% with that plan that was developed? Do we know?
I, we can follow up.
You follow up on that? Okay, thank you.
Yesterday, Carol and Muzelle was here, so I think that indicated support.
Point one. On Service 761...
Councilman.
On Service 761.
Yeah. Councilwoman Snead.
She's not here.
Okay. Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you. Just quickly, first of all, just thank you for all that you continue to do for the city and for north and northwest Baltimore. Mine is, I guess my question, comment, kind of statement, as I was sitting here and thinking of the Sustainability Commission and the greening efforts, and just remind, and as we have been speaking with other agencies and, and kind of talking about how agencies can partner and do things together, and then also thinking of a wonderful jewel in the city, the Silburn Arboretum, and a lot of people don't remember or forget that besides the Volmer Center there, they also have the horticultural classrooms and greening space there, and I was thinking of ideas to bring farmers together there to do things. You know, it's not just the flowers, it's again, the food access, but I'm noticing that there needs to be some gatherings of a place where they can go to share and discuss things and also learn things, so it would be a partnership with, again, parks and recreation. I don't know if you've already started things like that, but I know that that center has some wonderful space to do and bring people together and utilize, and also there's an organization within that arboretum that does those types, that they do those types of things as well. You want to speak on that?
Yes, Councilwoman, I'm smiling because I know that organization. Probably our team doesn't know this, but there is a Ryer Garden at Silburn, which was established in my mother's memory. And has been there about 15 years, so I'm very often there on the weekends.
A nice place to relax and...
Yeah, so, we would very much like to work with that, especially, I mean, they are part of the northwest cluster in the impact investment area, and that's a significant amenity. They are starting to branch out, working with schools in the area, as you may know, so, point well taken.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You talked about focus on middle neighborhoods. Can you talk about how planning is defining middle neighborhoods? What demographic indicators are indicative of a middle neighborhood? Like, and I represent diverse and...
Huge chunk of them, right.
Collectively, kind of middle-class neighborhoods. Is a middle-class neighborhood the same as a middle neighborhood? Do I represent that?
I would, I would...
As a third district resident, you're very familiar with the area that I represent. Is that a, do I represent middle neighborhoods?
I mean, this could be a half an hour discussion, as I'm sure you realize. So, we've defined it as the middle of the housing typology. If you're not familiar with the housing typology, I would love to do a briefing on it.
It's the only map I have in my office, because basically, it's the only map I have in my office, because it basically indicates everything you need to know about Baltimore.
So, it's a range of middle neighborhoods, right? Some are stronger than others. It's a range of strength. The housing typology essentially measures real estate, residential real estate strength. So, I would intuitively say it includes blue-collar neighborhoods, what we would traditionally call it, blue-collar neighborhoods also. It is not the highly distressed, high vacancy-level neighborhoods that are, that are comprised of impact investment areas, and it is not the top three levels, I believe it is, top two or three levels of the housing typology either. So, there will be different strokes for different folks. I think the unifying piece of that is the, the value of the real estate is extremely important to wealth building of those households in all of those typologies, and that we, as a planning department, if we train ourselves to be able to analyze and slice and dice a neighborhood real estate market, we could be helpful in contributing to the creation of household wealth in those neighborhoods.
A lot of people would say this isn't an approach that hinges on, maybe not a lot of people, plenty of people would say this is an approach that kind of hinges, is really framed entirely around a speculative housing market. I mean, you know, free, kind of free-market thinking, and that's not necessarily like maybe what should be driving our policy decision-making as a city, and...
Let me give you an example.
I would also say, I would also say that, that, that sounds, if I kind of envision what those neighborhoods are around Baltimore City, that sounds primarily like, like single-family zone kind of areas, and there's also a wealth of, you know, body of evidence that those are some of the least sustainable economically and environmentally, some of the least sustainably developed areas anywhere, you know, in any American city. And so, you know, I guess that, to me, brings kind of further reason to question the, the emphasis on those kind of neighborhoods, unless this means also like adding density to those kind of neighborhoods and saying this has to be a priority, actually, these neighborhoods are completely unsustainable unless we change their density.
These are all good points. In all things, I hope the Middle Neighborhood Task Force, which is set up now and should complete its work by the end of the year, will address. So, one point you're making, I think, very well taken, is we haven't, at least in a long time, looked at the single-family frame house neighborhoods that are a large part of our housing stock. The city in general has, has focused much more on row house neighborhoods than it has on single-family neighborhoods, but we see opportunity there also. It may be by increasing density, it may be by adjusting our tax credit programs. There's a number of tools that we'll look at through this process to see how we can make those neighborhoods more successful and build wealth. There may be financing issue, a good example, a large frame house in northeast Baltimore, there may be a way to finance that house that produces an owner-occupied unit with a smaller accessory unit that allows that house to be more affordable and also provides the income to maintain that type of circle. That could be a zoning issue, could be a financing issue.
Who is this middle incomes, this middle neighborhood task force? Who is it? How was it put together?
It was, it was actually established slightly just before I started, and it's chaired by Annie Millie, the Director of Live Baltimore.
Who else is on it? Who chose, who put it together?
I don't know the answer to that, but I would, it was a combination of DHCD and Live Baltimore, I guess.
I'd like to, I mean, I'd like to know more about that, because if I don't think that, I mean, if there's not, if there aren't people on it from like Smart Growth America and like smart growth organizations that are really conscientious about like the intersectionality of sustainability and livability, and, and people who are willing to question things, seriously question things like whether or not our planning strategy for the city should be based around a speculative real estate market.
So, yeah, let's talk about that for a second. So, in northeast Baltimore, for example, where there's been some successes, also in southeast Baltimore, with the receivership program. So, the receivership program that you all hopefully know, DHCD has stood up for the last 10 years or so, it, it has tended to be, to be biased, the outcomes are more on the rental side than the homeownership side for a variety of reasons, but... What's that?
A cost to bid.
Right. So, there is some fine-tuning going on of that process, but also, for example, in northeast Baltimore and southeast Baltimore, if you, if a, if a planner and a community organization that's trained in how to analyze your real estate market, you can use the receivership process to identify the worst properties in your neighborhood, which are the vacancies almost by definition, and if you can... And if you can, you can attract the kind of developer that you want, that does the homeownership product that you want. And in many cases, that worst house, after it emerges from the receivership and the redevelopment process, that worst house in the neighborhood will be the best house in the neighborhood. And if you do that over time, over a five-year period, you will have a pretty big impact on your neighborhood real estate market in a positive way.
Yeah, so that's like entirely based on like market-based strategy, but like is not in any way based in like building a more sustainable city. And I think that there are a lot of people that would question the planning department allowing that to be its guiding principle.
So Councilwoman Middleton has a follow-up comment, and then we're going to move to the next.
Just kind of listening to my colleague, I'm just kind of envisioning, just kind of piggybacking on what he's saying. I'm sitting here envisioning a community that Councilwoman Pinkett and I and the eighth district councilperson also share, Forest Park, which has the big homes. It's been neglect. You're talking about receivership. Is the organization healthy neighborhoods that kind of mans that community? Is that something that they should maybe be focusing on as well?
It could be. They have occupied the middle, the bulk of the middle neighborhood strategy in the past.
Because that's just been a problem in a lot of these homes that have been neglected in need receivership. There's squatters, there's drug use, there's, it's just, it's created problems in that middle neighborhood.
Yeah, right.
Strategy, strategy that you're discussing.
Right.
So Councilwoman Dorsey, you have another, if you could ask that question quickly, and Mr. Ryer, if you could respond, kind of give a quick response.
My previous question was about, you know, kind of big picture, you know, how the planning department is focusing its efforts, I guess, strategically. But, well, and I think that that's really, you know, that's my first inclination of what I think the planning department is really about. But also, the other part is obviously capital budget, the capital, capital improvement plan and that work, guiding that with, working with Planning Commission. I'm two and a half years into this office, and I've never been able to get one capital improvement project put into the budget for my district, period. Not one. And I've spent the last two years trying to coordinate multiple agencies around one project. I met about, I met with DPW, Reckon Parks, DOT, and Planning in March of 2018 about a project that, that was identified by the previous mayor and our now previous city council president, who's now our mayor, and worked, you know, through a lot of, you know, meetings and conversations with all these different agencies. And it was clearly identified as a priority project. And then it has no, has no funding to make it actually happen in the budget again this year. I'm like wondering, how in the hell am I supposed to deliver anything for my constituents in terms of a capital project when I can't get, I'm two and a half years into this, this office, and I have never seen one project put in my district? And if I go back through years and years and years of maps that show capital improvement projects in the city, it's clear that the third district has received the absolute short end of the stick in terms of capital improvement projects allocated in, throughout the city.
All right, well, I can't, I can't speak for the past.
Like, where, how do I get anything done?
I do, you know this, I mean, the, the, the agency has to generate the request. So we'll look at it.
I have five agencies, I have four agencies and the mayor and the city council president's office all say, this is a priority project and that we're going to collaboratively work on this. And I think that I go to the planning department and say, you're the ones that are supposed to be wrangling these people to make sure that priority coordinated projects like this actually rise and get, get focused on.
So, so Councilwoman Dorsey, your statement's been noted. I don't think we're going to get an answer to that in this hearing, but there definitely needs to be some conversation with planning, the administration, and Council President Scott's office on, on how that process should work for, for city, but also for the third district. Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you. Thank you for, I, I have a couple issues. I'd like to talk about a whole, an equity issue in the private sector that drives me and constituents crazy. And it's not anybody's fault, but it's everybody's problem. In, in a Hamden, which I share with the councilman. If there is a square inch of green left somehow undeveloped, this city will help whoever wants to develop it to the boundaries of the lot, with almost anything they want to develop it with. In Chum, on the other side of my district, and neighborhoods there like Darley Park, we can't get anybody to buy and do anything with property except investors that want to rent it, them out. There's something wrong with the, the way the city approaches directing private development. And if I may say so, the, the Planning Commission is seen certainly by people I represent in communities as of them, of them because we have to come and fight them around developments we don't want, which we always get. And we can't seem to use this tool that you have, of very brilliant people, to help us bring development where it's needed. I mean, this is about equity. I mean, this is so blatant that we live with, that it's, it's, it's really a scandal. First of all, destroying green space, side yards, square inches of grass in predominantly white communities, where it's seen as being, you can afford to do it, but it's not going to, it's going to, you can do this if you can just get that side yard and get it zoned apart from the house it's been next to for 100 years and build some monster that inspectors have to come up and out and shut down all the time. It's, it's wrong, one, period, when around, and you know it so well lately, the way it is. And then I cross Greenmount Avenue to the other half of my district, and we can't, I mean, I pray for middle neighborhoods. I pray that a Waverly will be seen as a middle neighborhood, so maybe we can get some help. But a Chum, all we went, we go through, and now we're going to get, we are going to get some new houses. That, that legislation went in in 2008. I put it in. And now we have an agreement, there's somebody to build there. So why, that's not what you all do every day. But there needs to be in this equity lens we're talking about here, an equity lens for, that where people in both those kinds of communities feel more connected to where the city is going. And like, now we're talking middle neighborhoods, and my colleague wants to, you know, subdivide row houses. Well, I'm just thinking about, well, maybe we have a chance to renovate and homeownership row houses.
So Councilwoman Clark, is there a response?
Well, no, is there a question? No, no, it's really a statement, and I will wrap it up because it's the first of my two, but I combined them. So, so basically, when you're looking at equity, it's very, now, Sustainability Commission is like grassroots, the people, it's like who we are, okay? And, and, and CHAP, that's, well, that's CHAP. We, we know what they do, and they do it lovely. I'm talking about planning, and they're very, very wonderful people, but they are the, that is where the philosophy, where what's happening is being driven because that's planning.
Councilwoman, can we get a question?
Is there a way to bring all what I have said into an equity lens by planning?
I, I think if I could try to summarize your request, it is to look at how we could use our zoning tools.
Yeah.
To distribute development more evenly across the city.
Or all those conferences everybody has to have with planning before they can scourge the land. And then have, have it all just be, be beyond the comprehension and ability of regular people who have jobs to be able to beat it back. I mean, thinking about the, the equity of having the people as involved as the developers in what goes on in these communities and having the respect for those people through the kind of transparency and, and interchanges that will make people feel that it's not just of them. It's really crucial. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sliffr, it is a little bit after 11, yeah. And so after this, we'll be transitioning to green infrastructure, but I want to give Councilwoman Sliffr an opportunity to, to ask his questions.
I have some questions on the performance measures. So for the, page 299, for the permit review in two days, in 2017, we went from 93% being reviewed in two days. 2018, it dropped down to 66%, which is a huge drop. So I'm curious to know what that drop was about. And while you get that information, also, where are we this year, do we know?
I know, I mean, Eric can answer that because he was here, but my understanding is that the reporting, the basis of the reporting was changed from the date of the original application to the referral date. And so it was simply a change in the process.
Good morning.
State your name, Eric.
Eric Tiso, Laney Eastern Design Division and Planning. So we had spent nine months trying to get the report out of Housing, frankly. I question the accuracy of that information. A couple of the reports that we got gave us the amount of days for each of those permits reviewed. However, it didn't give us the columns by which they calculated it. And not to get too far in detail, but there's a few different date columns involved, and I suspect that the way that the report was pulled led to inaccurate results. And I asked over a couple of times to try and get that from Housing. And I really didn't want this to come up and potentially make them look bad, but Shishen said, well, it's the best I can do, so here we are. So I question whether that number is actually accurate with such a big drop. But unfortunately, I don't have the tool to give you proof of that one way or the other.
Right, so since we don't have those numbers, then the performance measures just don't add up because also there's no numbers for the design review permits. Can we make a request to get the accurate numbers, number one? And number two, to also get year-to-date where we are for 2019 currently on these performance measures? Because this is something that we get complaints about all the time, about the review, as I'm sure you hear about it every day. And so I would just like to know accurate figures of, of what last year's was and where we are right now.
So Councilwoman Sliffr, do you want that to be a formal request?
Yes, absolutely.
So if, if you can restate that for Jeff.
Yeah, so Jeff, under their performance measures on page 299, they have inaccurate and also lacking information. So if we can get the accurate numbers, as well as for fiscal year 2019, instead of the target numbers, to get where we currently stand on that.
And we've been joined by Councilwoman Shannon Sneed and Councilman Chris Burnett.
And on, and on that same, on that same item over there, on page 298, line seven, you guys anticipate bringing in 62% less grants in this coming year. Is there like a major grant that we lost, or is there a reason for such a steep reduction?
Councilman. Which, which service number are you under?
I have to check this. I'm looking at, I just lost it. On, on page 298, all the way at the bottom, the last line, from year 2019, it had 4.2 million of grant subsidies contributions, and for recommended for 2020, it drops down to 1.6 million. So I'm wondering what, did we lose some grants? Are we not applying for grants that we had in the past? What's the steep reduction? Maybe Bob has the answer to that.
Yeah, I think it's, I'm trying to find which service, but there, there was money appropriated last year from, from the Exelon funding that is now expired, and I think that came out this year. I'll look and see what service that's in.
Okay.
What is it, seven? Seven sixty-five.
And one last request for this is they have $350,000 approximately of contractual work. I'm just wondering if we can get, like we've requested from every other agency, if we can get a list of what those contracts were.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Yeah, every agency that has contractual services, which I think is pretty much everyone, we've requested a list of what those contracts were. So you have about $350,000 worth of contractual services. So just wondering what, you know, what kind of contracts are we talking about?
Okay, we can do that. So Councilwoman Middleton, I know you have one quick comment.
Just one quick comment. In light of the discussion of density, density and making structures, two, three, four dwellings, there are still a lot of families out here in communities that work hard and have maintained their single-family home with the picket white fence, and particularly in African-American communities.
I understand.
And are proud of their surroundings and what they have accomplished. And that still exists definitely in our African-American communities.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Mr. Ryer. Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you. So I have a whole list of questions that I feel like has been delivered from the capital budget, and especially my number one concern is the line item 517-001, Bowley's Lane Northeast Collection Yard Improvement. That has been on the, in the budget for a while, and when we looked at it, it has been removed. I don't know why it's been removed because this really helps with all the dumping in East Baltimore. This would allow folks to dump anything there. And for the last couple of years, I think for the budget season, folks have been saying, officially have been saying, we would get that open. So I, you don't have to answer now, but I would like someone to research to find out whether or not it's going to be back open, both parts of it, so we can stop the dumping. I also have a whole list of other things that have been cut throughout the budget that impact Baltimore City, East Baltimore District 13, especially around black residents in the neighborhood, that I can't understand why they've been cut that will help District 13, District 12, and District 2 at some point. I have the list, I will clearly hand it over, but that's a big thing, that Northeast Collection Yard Improvement will definitely help all of the districts in our neighborhood, so.
Do that offline if you want.
Okay, so.
Mr. Chair, I'm actually going to grab that list from Councilwoman Sneed, and I'll just enter those in order in our record here.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Ryer. So we will transition from this portion of the hearing to green infrastructure, which will include Recreation and Parks, Planning, and Department of Transportation.